Here she is.
Yeah, I love this, what we did and it took a while to do everything too. Especially if you read, now that you've read all four of these gospels. Yeah, so it took a while to do that. It said twenty minutes.
I got you, Father, really?
Cause I was taking notes.
I think I must have gone slower because I only made it through three and part of it happened.
And it is good to read, and again, that's one of the things I do on Holy Week, is read through every gospel of the resurrection story because again, it's so powerful. Different perspectives and stuff like that too, but hearing that and knowing that, so that's a blessing to have as well. So lots of good things, but it's some great questions and stuff too that we can go over. But anyone like to start with prayer? That they do want to start to pray? Would you pray?
Thank you, Father, for a beautiful day. Thank you for the beautiful blue sky. Reminder of nature and the new birth that's coming in the trees and flowers and thank you for this story and the time we have to study today. That the resurrection's coming. It helps us as we learn from one another in your word. Amen.
Do you have any other intro you want to do before you look at all the questions?
You know, I discovered something today. You know how many times we've read over these? And we always hear about the, the one thief on the cross or the one that, you know, says this man has done nothing. But I didn't realize, I don't know why, that in at least two out of the four gospels, it said that those, they were mocking him too. And it didn't say anything about one of them being insane, this day you'll be with me in paradise. I know it's trivial, but I thought, now, why have I not noticed that before?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure there, there are like one that shares.
Luke is the one that shares.
That shares that, and again, we're not sure how long they're on the cross.
Sure.
Doing this, did he finally realize, you know, what, what's the timing where like, oh, wait a minute, this is a holy man, I really, you know, and you know, and turning to him, you know, how long did it take the centurion, like, oh, wait a minute. This, this truly is a centipede, you know, and that's not shared in every scripture either. So the four gospels do give a perspective of, of what they've seen, what they've heard. And it doesn't mean necessarily that one's wrong, one's right.
Sure.
But sharing different things, but yeah.
Just to, I thought, why wouldn't I notice that before? You know, how we get used to reading through things and
and that's why it's important to read, you know, so much of the scripture is getting the different perspectives, learning things, growing from it. You know, continuing to see everything that happened because again, if we were all watching an accident out there.
Different.
You know.
Different perspectives.
Our reactions are what we saw, what we heard, what we, you know, would be different. So as they went through that, seeing and knowing that. So, and that's one of the, the first questions, if you read all of them, you know, what are some of the things that also were, were interesting, were different, were amazing, were problematic to you, any of those things as you read through every part of the crucifixion?
I always wondered about Judas. I thought he was there, he listened to him, he's seen some of the miracles that Jesus did. And he still went against him and, you know, but in one of the gospels I was reading that he still didn't believe. And then after that, then the devil got into him and that's, so I didn't know that.
Yeah, and I've heard again, different, this is not straight out of the gospel.
Right.
Different references of that, you know, did Judas want to push and what he thought Jesus Messiah should be the king? And so did he push, this was one first, you know, somebody's opinion that he did that so that Jesus would, you know, be more powerful and not go to the cross that he, you know, like, oh yeah, he's the king, if he is the leader of everybody, if he's going to do everything, then, then yeah, he, he can defeat all this and so I'll turn him over.
Anyway, Judas was trying to force Jesus' hand to show himself as.
Yeah, and well, you know that they thought that he was supposed to take care of Rome and fight them.
Yeah.
And, you know, that wasn't at all.
Yeah, and then many other Jews thought the Messiah is supposed to do that instead of the humble servant that we know Jesus is and we still need to grow in that understanding and how we are to live as well, not to be overcoming and powerful in that way, but spiritually powerful and overcome sin, not just.
And I heard some questions about, in the same section about Judas that, you know, last week we were talking about how you said the devil came into him, but we were talking about that Judas had free will. But sometimes even when we have free will, we're on such a path and we keep telling ourselves it's okay and we keep rationalizing to the point where we've talked ourselves into doing something and we've taken away our own free will to do it. We keep thinking, yeah, that this is what I should do, this is what I should do until we, we see that as being true. So I would say even up to the point where, you know, up to the point where Jesus, or excuse me, Judas put the rope around his neck to hang himself, he could have repented of his sin up to that point. He couldn't have changed it and he couldn't change the consequences, but he could have repented of his sin at least.
But as you say that too, it makes me think of, there's other people that have taken their lives because they did something and they felt like they couldn't be forgiven. Again, as I, and as I've talked to people who were suicidal, you know, Sandy talks to people who are suicidal at the VA hospital, you know, feeling like the things that they had then could not be forgiven. So I don't, it, Judas, he could have, but people still feel that way. Something they have done, decisions they have made can't be forgiven and so they think the only option is to take their lives.
So, so one half of it is the personal and the other half is the theological and the theological is that he could have sought forgiveness and he could have been forgiven. The other part is in his own mind, what he has built this into and whether it's beyond his, whether he thinks that he's completely unworthy of forgiveness by that point.
I think he was moving in the right direction when he threw the money back.
Yeah.
After, he was having a change of mind of heart, almost repenting of what he was doing. So then the word remorse comes to me, oh, what have I done? I identified Jesus in the garden. And so I had a great deal of remorse. It's all my fault. I turned him in. And he couldn't get over that, beyond that. Suicide was, is only relief from the pain and the agony of.
So he thought, and how do you like the way that Judas went to Jesus and identified him?
Kissed him on the cheek?
Kiss of brotherly love is what Paul describes, how we're supposed to greet each other, but that certainly wasn't what that was. Or a goodbye kiss.
Yeah.
As it turns out.
He had a weakness. He would steal from the till, didn't he?
So understanding.
So the devil used that against him. Well, maybe you can get some money, you know, turning down.
That could be too, that was.
And then going to the cross, that was going a little too far. Things can get out of him when you release it to somebody else.
Well, and I, I mean, if we're looking at Judas and thinking, well, maybe he was trying to force Jesus' hand, not because he wanted to see the kingdom of God bloom on the earth, but instead he would, wanted to strengthen his position as one of the followers. And if Jesus is the Messiah and he's acting as the Messiah they expected, then he'd be one of Jesus' right-hand men. And I mean, I, with all the things that we've said here, that, that might be more likely than a thief.
And they're coming.
Stealing power.
Yeah, on the differences between the four different crucifixion stories.
Well, that, that's an, that's a good practice for next week too, to, to read the different accounts of the resurrections because you'll see one of the things that always strikes me is in John, there's one woman and I think in Matthew, there's three. And yet John was right there, so, you know, so, but look for those differences too.
So, and he was at the crucifixion, who was there during what happened?
Jesus.
When Jesus was crucified, yeah.
Well, John.
Two marriages.
Very sure, because he's, and his mother, because he turned his mother over and said this to your mom.
And I think there's only one that records that, that he.
I think that's John that.
Was there.
Seems like a lot of the disciples would be, even if they're not named. I mean, even if they were trying to be not front and center for everything.
I, I think the only.
We'll read about that.
One who claims to have been there is, is John.
The other, I think, were hiding out.
They can't, I'm a dodge. Running on, hey, that, they couldn't have come back.
Well.
And also in John, and I know that, well, no, this is a trial, but in John, it said that John had access to the inner court and so he invited Peter in and I, that John was the only disciple that ended up actually going to the resurrection. So maybe he thought he had safety from, even if he was identified as a disciple of Christ.
Alright. So, so Ron, if you want to start reading Mark fifteen that's on the screen and we'll go around the table and tables and read.
Verse by verse or thirty-nine of them.
Do you read part of it and then I'll take it?
Read what's on the screen and then the next person will read the next string.
Yeah.
Okay, screen by screen. And as soon as it was morning, the chief priest held a consultation with the elders and scribes and the whole council. And they bound Jesus and led him away, delivered him over to Pilate. And Pilate asked him, are you the king of the Jews? And he answered him, you have said so.
And the chief priest accused him of many things. And Pilate again asked him, have you no answer to make? See how many charges they bring against you. But Jesus made no further answers, so that Pilate was amazed.
Now, at the feast, he used to release for them one prisoner for whom they asked. And among the rebels, rebels in prison, who had committed murder in the insurrection, there was a man called Barabbas. And the crowd came up and they began to ask Pilate to do as he usually did for them. And he answered them, saying, do you want me to release you for the king of the Jews?
For he perceived that it was out of envy that the chief priest had delivered him up. But the chief priest stirred up the crowd to have him released for them Barabbas instead. And Pilate again said to them, then what shall I do with the man you call the king of the Jews? And they cried out again, crucify him. And Pilate said to them, why? What evil has he done? But they shouted all the more, crucify him.
So Pilate, wishing to satisfy the crowd, released for them Barabbas and having scorched Jesus, he delivered him to be crucified. And the soldiers led him away inside the palace. That is the governor's headquarters. And they called together the whole battalion.
And they clothed him in purple cloak. Twisting together a crown of thorns, they put it on him. And they began to salute him, hail, king of the Jews. And they were striking his head with a reed and spitting on him and kneeling down in homage to him. And when they had mocked him, they stripped him of the purple cloak and put his own clothes on him. And they led him out to crucify him.
And they compelled a passerby, Simon of Cyrene, who was coming in from the country, the father of Alexander and Rufus, to carry his cross. And they brought him to the place called Golgotha, which means place of a skull. And they offered him wine mixed with myrrh, but he did not take it.
And they crucified him and divided his garments among them, casting lots for them to decide what each should take. And it was the third hour when they crucified him. And the inscription of the charge against him read, the king of the Jews.
And with him, they crucified two robbers, one on his right and one on his left. And those who passed by, de-ridded him, wagging their heads and saying, aha, you who would destroy the temple and rebuild it in three days?
Save yourself and come down from the cross. So also the chief priests with their scribes mocked him to one saying, another saying, he saved others, he cannot save himself.
Let the Christ, the king of Israel, come down now from the cross that we may see and believe. Those who were crucified with him also reviled him. And when the sixth hour had come, there was darkness over the whole land until the ninth hour. And at the ninth hour, Jesus cried out with a loud voice. Although I don't know the words, but.
Eloi, eloi.
Eloi.
I don't either.
Which means, my God, my God, why have you forsaken me? And some of the bystanders hearing it said, behold, he's calling Elijah.
And someone ran and filled a sponge with salt and water. Put it on a reed and gave it to him to drink, saying, wait, let us see whether Elijah will come to take him down. And Jesus uttered a loud cry and breathed his last. And the curtain of the temple was torn in two from top to bottom. And when the centurion who stood facing him saw that in this way he breathed his last, he said, truly this man was the son of God.
So again, as you heard from Mark, what are some of the other things that stand out or made you shake, made you sad, made you maybe made you happy, huh?
I couldn't understand the people crying to crucify him. I mean, wasn't some of them that is followers or believers that? And why did they do that? Well, they said, um, one of them has said that the scribes and stuff egged them on to do that. But I don't understand why they would do that.
Well, true believers, there probably weren't very many. And I mean, people, when they get into a crowd or a lot of times they're just looking for a show and the better show would be if they torture Jesus and punish him.
And listen to the leaders, you know, the priests who are supposed to be religious leaders. Listen to what they're saying. Yeah, the, the mob, crowd mentality happens more than once. Um, again, I'm thinking in January sixth of the.
Yeah.
And that, you know, that a crowd gathered to do something wrong, except too many things that were wrong, not everything maybe, but many things that were very wrong to our government and the leaders there, you know, the vice president had, had his life.
Yeah.
Scared that they were going to take his life, somebody had said something like that. So, so trying to find out. I, here too, so the crowd, as well as, you know, again, if, if they had seen the miracles and had listened to his teaching, you know, but then could turn away. None of the churches ever like that though, right? I'm trying to, to follow and do what is right, you know, and again, I think we have pulled the nominations, you know, again, that, oh, we gotta split, we gotta, you know, that, different things because they're, they've turned the wrong way. You know, again, I believe, or I wouldn't have joined the gold Methodist church if I didn't think it was turning the right way.
Right.
To, to try to follow God's word, that it felt like it had to split. So, but looking at different things too, did they, were they following just what was going on, following? You know, but again, these were the leaders that were saying, these, the religious leaders that were saying that, so. But yeah, it, it is very difficult to, to try to understand them shouting out that. And who were they shouting for then, instead of, they were shouting against Jesus, but now for who?
Barabbas.
For Barabbas.
For an insertion.
Well, and that's interesting because Barabbas was guilty of the crime that they were accusing Jesus of having committed and Jesus was innocent. So I don't know how you could get a more of a contrast. And that's what the people were choosing over Jesus.
Do you think they all knew about Barabbas?
That'd be a good question too, you know, for sure, other than if he was going to be crucified, then that he would have had to have done something wrong. And it shares, you know, that he was one who had killed, you know, and so that's why he was being crucified is because they had, he'd been committed, he had already gone through the process.
Yeah.
So otherwise, I mean, they just didn't crucify anybody at random, so.
So Jesus died in his place.
And I always wish we knew and had the rest of the story. So did Barabbas then say, wow, Jesus gave his life for me?
Yeah.
Did he change? Did he know? Did he follow, you know, God's plan then? Uh, I, I pray, you know, that kind of person did. You know, because he, his life was saved by Jesus. He may not have understood crucifixion and everything that, but his life was saved by Jesus. Did he go and ask somebody? Did he go tell, ask the disciples, so tell me about this guy?
You would have thought something, wouldn't you?
You know, so, and, and we don't have any recording of that, but we don't have a recording of everything that happens either, you know, so.
I do have one person who said, what has he done? And that was Pilate.
Yeah, yeah.
They didn't mention it in this.
The pilot as his defender is kind of interesting too.
And he washed his hands of it.
A non-Jew.
Non-Jew. Oh, I never thought of that.
Was not Jewish.
Yeah, he was a Roman.
Roman soldier, yeah, but, you know, but yeah, he, he recognized it. But he also, again, went with the crowd.
Well, he, he went with the crowd and that he left Barabbas go.
Well.
Well, and.
Do you think it was taken and off of him and okay, the scribes and them are the ones that decided to do it?
And I'm. But he still.
Yeah, he still, right.
Free to stop it.
He washed his hands, so spiritually he thought he was okay, but he's, he's still the one that said he's gonna die. He was the one in charge of that.
Did he?
Yeah, he had to condemn him. He was the only one who could.
That, that's his position.
He washed his hands of it. Sounds like he let it go.
Yeah.
But them deciding. They said they couldn't kill someone, right? The, the scribes and the priests and so on said, well, we can't kill.
Said, we don't have authority to do it.
No.
And that's another reason to try to turn it over to the Romans. Uh, but again, did it put any less guilt on them? When they are saying that he needs to die and here you Romans make that decision? If they push that, I mean, again, this is looking at the resurrection and reminding ourselves. If we say, well, somebody else is going to make that decision, you know, but I, I don't, I'm not going to get involved.
Yeah.
But if we've not stood up for what's right, then that's still part of our responsibility as well.
Spineless, yeah. Well, I was there once.
He, he certainly took the easy way, easier way out.
Yeah. I think they were fearful maybe too, because to go against, then if the, if they didn't do what the crowd wanted them to do and the mob, then they were, it could cause
Oh, right.
tension for the Romans and the Romans and then that would be, their jobs would be maybe on the line or unrest, more unrest. Seemed like they.
Did leaders ever do that? What, what does the crowd want or what is right?
Yeah.
Yeah, pluralism. Preach to the popular.
Yeah.
Well, and it's. To me, it's interesting that the first person that Jesus died for was Barabbas. But he wasn't the last. And I think we can all find people who didn't acknowledge or live into the sacrifice that was made on behalf of not just believers, but everyone.
In emails from the Gospel of Mark that jumped out.
I, I always love the phrase because it's a lie when the, the leaders are standing below the cross and they shout out, save yourself, come down and we'll believe. Always wanting one more miracle and telling another lie because they haven't believed up to this point. I mean, you think, well, what does it take for them to believe? And what does it take for us to believe? Cause we don't even have, we have the stories written down about what happened, but we don't have. They saw. A lot of them saw what was done. And they still chose not to believe. The evidence was there and they chose to believe something else for that it didn't matter what he did. And that's pretty much what Caithus said, when Caithus said that it was better to one, for one man to die than for many. Well, it's better for us.
And I think too, the, I mean, the, many of the people would have seen the miracles, feeding of the five thousand, those kind of things, the healing. And we think, oh, well, they should know. Well, what have we seen? What has happened in our lifetime that are miracles, that are Jesus at work? God blessing, God at work. And we don't recognize or we don't share or we don't, you know, take, yes, God's been at work. So we can point the finger at them. But also a reminder for us, like, how has God been at work? He has been still. He's not stopped working. You know, so continuing to embrace that.
Well, there are miracles that are still happening today and we can choose to rationalize those miracles and say, oh, they just didn't see it right or whatever, we didn't see it right. That's not really what happened. And, cause you know, people say, well, there aren't miracles still happening, just like in Jesus' time, the Pete, a lot of people said, well, they must not have really been miracles. They didn't, really didn't happen. And so we have to open our eyes and it, with a willingness to believe even today.
Say praise the Lord. Yeah. Acknowledge this. Which, which one of you all read the crucifying him, crucifying him? Who read that?
What's out of book?
He'd be killed.
Oh.
That was in there.
Yeah.
Does, does it that, whenever you read that, whenever you hear it, because hearing it is even worse than reading it. Does that make you just tremble and feel?
Cringe.
Again, and that's why I think so many times it is important for us to read out loud, to hear God's word out loud, to get that again, how they would have been shouting it apparently. The energy to hear that and then just like, happened to our Lord and Savior. You know, and he willingly took it. Again, there's the song, he could have called ten thousand angels. And taken him up and, and he, he wouldn't have had to go through this, but he chose, you know, so hearing that is always just, or saying it. And, you know, share that. And the important part of the message of what Jesus willingly did for our sin. You know, it's so important. Um, and when I think about all the, the crucifixion, Good Friday, the Stations of the Cross, I looked it up. Uh, I usually try to go to the Stations of the Cross because it goes through the scripture and shares that and it does, I think adds to other stations, I hope you may know Ron, that are not actual scripture based, but are close to what could have happened, the Stations of the Cross. Um, and St. John's is having it at three o'clock on Good Friday. And three o'clock is what some would consider the time when Jesus died. So that will be an opportunity to go. Again, you don't have to be Catholic to go to the service. You can't take communion or anything, which I don't think they'll have it on Good Friday anyway. But it's just a, a good reminder. I, I've gone through it many different times and just how meaningful it is to go through that, remembering how much he's done. And it gives you even more. And just how meaningful it is to go through that, remembering how much he's done. And it gives you even more reason to celebrate Easter. You know, and you get to Easter like, this is what he's done for us. You you should be even brighter and even more. So that's just another opportunity to to go as well.
What day's Good Friday on?
So.
Friday, right?
Twenty. Twenty nine, yes.
Well, it's even more powerful when you see it on the big screen. The, I forget.
Passion of the Christ.
Yeah.
It's hard to watch that.
Well, that is hard to watch.
Yeah.
That's what we did at Good for Good Friday last year at Trinity.
At Watson.
And we we read the clips that are directly supported by scripture or read the scripture and then watched the portrayal.
And when it first came out, you know, people had popcorn and everything at the movie theater, it's eating and then you stop.
Yeah.
Can't eat it anymore because it starts really early on in the movie and of does that. You you have to have a really hard heart to keep eating. Alright, so there's lots of good questions on the in the book. So page sixty six. As Jesus contrasted with Barabbas in this passage, what can we learn about it? Forgiveness and freedom in Jesus, or shadowed by Rabbis' unexpected release from prison? Any comments you had about number one?
Just a couple of things for that, the contrast between the two, um one was innocent, the other was guilty. So there's a question that and another one. Jesus saved lives and Barabbas took at least one life.
Yeah, opposite, yeah. Other comments?
On the contrast, I had good and evil.
Anything else?
Are you doing question one or?
Any of them, yeah. Yeah, we're on question one yet.
They're related. Um the contrast, Jesus had not committed murder, Barabbas had. What can we learn from that contrast? And my answer was, life is not fair. Innocent people do suffer, and that's as true today as it was back then. Breaks your heart sometimes.
Yeah, pray like right now too, for the missionaries in Haiti, one of the, it's again, very difficult going on right now, lots of. And um they had on the news that she was wanting to try to get out to be safe, like, nope. No, no flights can go out. You just have to stay.
Could they go to the embassy there that they?
So I I don't know, yeah, for sure. I think the other thing was in Haiti, they could go over to, was it, I say Dominican Republic.
Yeah, DR.
But they have, they can't all just get there either easily and and lots of problems with that, so. Anyway, she as a missionary, she felt like she couldn't go anywhere safely. So I don't know that would be a safe place either.
So you needed a gun to be safe, huh?
Maybe, maybe they work. It might put a big cro or big red X on your head if you had a fire on.
You know, forgiveness being um. In Jesus foreshadowed by Barabbas' unexpected release from prison, I was thinking that he. He really didn't deserve to be released and we don't deserve. Either the grace of God, but is provided for us.
Amen.
The gospel in about twelve words.
Anything else in the first set of questions? Alright, number two. As Jesus consistently connected to the title, King of the Jews, why is this so strongly emphasized?
First stop, because he really was. I mean, it's used as an insult and used to make fun of him all the way through, but he really was the king of the Jews.
Other comments?
You think of the king and and their thoughts of the king would represent royalty, power, strength, being in command. Of course, they were mocking him by that, but. None of those traits were what Jesus represented with humility, servant hood, caring for others, not forcing people to do things. But allowing them to make choices of their own. So it.
And he still doesn't force us today to follow or anybody else to follow him. It's our choice.
Well, in face of it, to me, it is kind of audacious, you know. You look at him and he's bloodied and he's beaten. King of the Jews? How can that be? And it's um, of course, three times before emphasis, it's a learning, teaching tool. But just the reality of it. Any thinking person just have to stop and say, what are they saying? How could there be any truth in that statement at all? Well. When you start to think about it. That's my king. I want him. Me, I'm just, you know, the thinking person. You get your attention. Got mine.
Yeah, and that pilot, it says sign up, King of the Jews, in three different languages. It's not because of Mark, but it's uh um. That that statement is is there even by a non-Jew sharing?
Not just the king of the Jews, the king of everyone.
King of the world.
And he said it and that settles it.
Well, that's what Jesus told him. He said, you said that I was.
And this Gentile affirmed it. And this whole thing, even putting a robe on Jesus, they were going through the motions, but you know.
Coronating, coronation.
Then they put a crown on his head. That wasn't nice.
Sure, it was painful after he'd been beaten up so much. I have to again, in in the Old Testament, um Israel had, was supposed to be following God. But the rest of the communities had kings, so they asked for a king. So originally. The king was not the right role and God was supposed to be the king and Jesus is God. So as he is the king, um and and the leader, so. But he came to show us and. Alright, number three, different characters, Sanhedrin. What did you write? What do you think, see there?
Well, I put down that that they couldn't find any fault with Jesus, and so they had to have false testimonies.
Yeah.
And they they had already decided what they were going to do. They were just trying to assuage their guilt and say, look, we're going through. The requirements, this is, this is what our law says we're supposed to do. And then they can't find anybody to say. To uh enforce their law so they do what they want to anyway. That doesn't sound like human beings, does it?
It doesn't sound like a priest or chief priest, does it? Or rabbis? They fall short of the glory of God.
Pastors or.
No, we're perfect. No, 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 we're on online, right? No, we're not perfect. So I also, I also wrote, all Jewish leaders uh came together to bind Jesus.
Yep.
That that unity, the wrong kind of unity. But they came together, so uh as soon as it was morning. So the other thing is, um I assume. After, you know, it's the timing of it and stuff too, um getting out and going, we we got him, I don't. Alright, then Pilate. How do you like Pilate? Or dislike Pilate?
You know, that that I thought that Pilate was confused because he couldn't understand why the people wanted to kill Jesus. And he couldn't understand why Jesus would speak up. And like I think someone said earlier, I think Pilate was scared of the people and that's why he went along with it. Because he didn't want anything to happen to him.
Yeah, yeah, very good.
Self-serving note without a doubt.
Yeah.
Yep.
Crowd can have a pressure on us. One against, how many others?
Well, the sometimes it's just the loudest voice and when we were talking about this and it it's somewhat similar. You know, nineteen hundred years after in Marian, two young black men were lynched in the courthouse square. And crowd gathered and you know, the crowd was egging them on and. You know, you if you talk to people who were there and so. We haven't changed much in the nineteen years intervening, you know, a loud voice. You know, can sway people to do wrong things. And especially in this case, it's not just loud voices. It's the people who are supposed to be in charge of what's going on. At least from a spiritual standpoint, even if. If uh Rome was technically in charge.
So Pilate, what was he considered? How high up the ladder was he? And could he have spoken up and had the last word?
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
Yeah, he he wasn't, he was the. Other than if the emperor came, he was the big great, he was Rome's greatest. Most powerful person in in the province.
Well, he could have stopped this whole thing.
He could have.
Well, there's one little side story on there. It's always intrigued me and that was the person who was not even there. The person, his wife, who had a dream, was troubled. And. Talk about a confused man. I think that was in the back of his mind, that this is not gonna go well. That woman, she knew something that I don't know or understand.
His wife?
Yes.
And was it a dream or a vision? Do you remember? No.
If if anybody's, you know, has any superstitions at all, I imagine that he might have. So somehow he had no words for it, but he kind of knew. This is not the way it's supposed to be going. My wife warned me.
Yeah, I wrote down too, that Pilate was functional. It's not about what's right or wrong, it's just what's going to function for the.
Get her done.
And satisfy the crowd.
When he was amazed. Because Jesus didn't have much to say to him in his own defense. And the the power of silence in that.
Now, our default position is we go before the court. I'm not guilty. I mean, we defend ourselves. And Jesus came to the end of that, playing that game.
Yeah.
But if Pilate said, no, I'm not gonna do this. What would have happened if it didn't happen? I mean, it was a prophecy that this, because God said it's time or Jesus said it's time.
Yeah.
That's why he didn't defend himself.
Right.
Well, and again, you know, Jesus knew that somebody was gonna turn him over, it happened to be Judas. Judas Goodison said no at one time, just, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
It was an ass that had a time he went to them, so.
Dream.
A dream?
A dream, I bet. So I was kind of thinking, so the woman had the dream. So the pilot's wife had the dream.
Matthew twenty seven nineteen is the verse.
She could give it to herself.
How'd she get the word to Pilate? No telephones.
Besides, while he was sitting on the judgment seat, his wife sent word to him. Have nothing to do with that righteous man, for I have suffered much because of him today in a dream. She suffered much.
During the day.
Did I hear that? God is at work?
And knowing that he was righteous, you know, so. So Pilate knew too, yeah, yeah, and it would be interesting to know what if, but. Yeah, and Jesus knew that that was, what do you go to? Alright, and then the crowd. Anything on the crowd versus eight?
One response really crucify him.
That's the easy way out.
Says it all, I think.
Well, and to me, the amazing thing is that Pilate kept going back. Because what did Pilate care about this? This one Jewish person, when he had. That they were a thorn in his high side and they were routinely making him look bad to the emperor in Rome and. They were a hard province to rule and that cry Pilate, because he knows that. There's nothing wrong in this man, that he's done nothing wrong, keeps going back. I mean, clearly, he thought that Jesus should be released, but.
As we mentioned before, the chief priest stirred up the crowd to ask for Barabbas to be released and not Jesus, and Jesus killed. So it had been a big crowd and been influenced. Not necessarily this kind exactly, but then led something else that. He might not have done before. Drinking, smoking, hoping that the rest of the crowd, they're cursing. Cheering for things that are appropriate.
Well, if you go to a concert, you can smoke marijuana and you don't even have to take it. You know, you cannot not breathe.
I'm a bit one of those guys.
I don't want to push this too far, but the onlookers, they derided him, they taunted him, and I thought. Where were his followers? There were crowds of people running to see him.
Right.
Oh, where were they? Bed, sleeping, I guess.
Outside the gate.
Was there a, the, was it, there was having a feast and when they were doing this before the feast or was it afterwards?
After the passover.
After, actually, you know, the Passover.
Okay, so then there was huge amount of crowds.
Yeah.
And then, so I'm sure Pilate was concerned with, because there was more people there than usual.
That's a good point too, but they were all supposed to be believers.
Yes.
Hit of Jew Judaism, so.
But as a pastor, I'd be thinking, where are my people?
Yeah, no.
You you were there, you followed me.
I mean, and in the in the passion, the only people they show of Jesus's followers really are. His mom and another woman and.
Peter, was he there? Standing afar.
Stand before.
We don't know, no record of it.
I spent thirty five years counting people. And when the attendance is going this way, I. And I mean. Where are my people to defend me in the hour of my need and as a pastor or as a Jesus being crucified? And then my father mentioned about fickle, crowds are fickle.
Do you, do you think Jesus realized that there wouldn't be any people there to? Do you think Jesus realized that there wouldn't be any people there to say, no, let's don't do this?
Well, earlier, yeah, it talks about that, or maybe it's scripture I'm reading, preaching. That it talks about that, you know, it's like, I, I know, you're not gonna be there.
Right, you're all gonna fall away.
It's in the Gospel of John, I guess that's what Gary for.
Okay.
I know you're not gonna be there, I'm gonna pray for you anyway.
Well, Peter was nearby, but he denied him.
Yeah.
Three different times.
Right, he, while he was outside.
He was trying to keep an eye on.
Where they were having the trials.
So, I don't know if there's a movie or if there's one scripture that talks about. Peter and, and Jesus see each other after he denies himself the third time. We know the rooster's crow and I can't remember now if it's actual.
I think it's a movie. I don't think it specifically says, that Peter looked up and saw Jesus. Peter looked up and realized. What Jesus had taught him.
Seeing Jesus face. He said, no, I don't do him. Alright, how about the soldiers? Anybody else in the military inside John?
I was.
Okay, so you're a soldier.
I was just following orders.
Okay.
Didn't, didn't work for the Germans in, after the Second World War. And it doesn't work for them either. But again, the mindset for Rome against any of the conquered peoples. Would probably be that none of them. They barely human at most, if they even consider them to be human. That would, that would be my perspective on it from, I mean, Rome isn't. Rome is the king of the world in that area, you know, clear into Asia and into Germanica. Even into the British Isles and North Africa. And we can't do any wrong. I mean, our leader is God.
We all are expendable anyway.
Yeah, they, they, who cares what happens?
Go to the next slide, either, is the, what did the Romans do? And then maybe one more. Nineteen. It struck his head, it spit on him. And they mocked him, they didn't just crucify him.
There's a lot of emotion in that.
Oh, yeah. Lot of disruption going on and they're probably having to work long, longer hours. And be out of the barracks more because the people are up and about and causing trouble. And taking it out on this.
Yeah. I could be in my bunk asleep.
I could be in the brothel and drinking and all, all sorts of.
And the operative wine wish murder, I wrote that down, so what's murder about?
Bitter? And he refused it.
They had a little bit of anesthetic.
That's what I wonder.
Qualities.
He's gonna go out his way.
Yeah. He wasn't gonna take anything else. Alright, how about the onlookers?
Oh, one more thing on the soldiers? I thought that was strange that they cast lots for his clothing. I'm like, what, what would he have had that they?
Well, that, for a long time, that was how the executioner got. Whatever the victim was getting. And even in, like when Anbo Lin was, even into King or Henry the Eighth in England. They would, when the executioner came to lop off their head, they would give him a coin. So that his aim would be true. And so that, that's been going on for a long time. But this is also the fulfillment of a scripture that says that they would cast lots for.
Prophecy.
I guess, I just wonder, I mean, he had lived such a simple life with not possessions. I thought, what, what would they have to?
Trophy.
Gain, yeah, that could be, I suppose.
Something to take back from.
Yeah.
From your time and.
Yeah, but another fulfillment of prophecy that they would actually do that, so. Okay, anything else? Onlookers? They were all nice people.
Well, they just thought, save yourself.
Their cloak, the, the purple cloak was on for such a short time.
Just symbolize royalty, so it was another mock.
Mocking, yeah, another way to mock him.
King.
But then that'd be ruined with blood.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
It was only the wealthy.
So, yeah, cause purple is royalty.
I can't remember so many things, I don't know whether it's scriptural or whether it's true. Was the robe seamless?
There's, there's something about it being special.
Really, it, it's not just a year, it would have been. Which is kinda nice that the perfect person would have a perfect robe. But they can make a robe that's seamless, you seamstress know how to do that?
However long the size.
And then you still, you gotta fasten it together.
Well, like knitting, if you would knit.
Cut off the bottoms, okay.
Cloak typer.
And that was probably the, the thing of his that was of the most value. Was that unique? And like you said, he was poor and so.
Who was poor?
Jesus, didn't have a, didn't carry a lap around a lot of goods.
That robe would be different.
Right, that's, that's why they, it was what they were really after.
Anything else on the rebels that were being crucified too?
Well, they keep thinking about the temple, they did not understand what he's talking about. Destroy the temple and it will be rebuilt in three days. He's talking in parables. He's on a different rhythm than they are.
Well, they're throwing his words back at him because, well, just five days ago, he said if you destroy. He would destroy, or the temple was destroyed, he would rebuild it in three days. And he can't even save himself, how's he gonna do that?
Well, you nailed me to the cross, it's kinda hard to come down.
Well, as mentioned previously, but the two rebels reviled him. Then I have parentheses, one evidently came to faith, which kinda gives me some comfort. You know, we have people who ignore Jesus all their lives. And we talk about the deathbed repentance, well, it's real.
Right.
It can't happen. Happening in the cross, their crosses.
And it's often hard for people to accept that there was a mass murderer that said he accepted Christ. You know, and people, no, we don't wanna. We don't want him to be forgiven. I was like, well, that's really why Jesus came for everybody, you know, so. Uh, and if he did it for this one, he could do it for another one, but yeah.
And he knows the heart, so if it was a true repentance.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking too, that he would know.
Yeah.
Right. So, and then the centurion says what?
Surely this man is the son of God.
He saw how he dismissed his spirit. And he exclaimed, this was the son of God, wow.
Took a lot to change his heart.
Which makes you ask the question, have you ever seen anybody and you have felt and known that they were holy and spiritual and righteous? And full of love, even though generally they wouldn't have looked. Like a priest or pastor or a missionary. Have you seen somebody that just felt that, even though they weren't beautiful? But you felt their love and grace, you felt something so good.
I had one at my gym town shirt, Rosetta Smith, she could read my mind. I was careful what I said around her. You know, like Jesus, she just, she had that gift for knowing right from wrong and what's appropriate and what's not. I would. I respected her and her husband too as well, but, but she had that.
He was our plumber. Then we got into trouble at the house, we had a big flood.
He was more than a plumber. When time came to build a sanctuary, he, he did all the consultations with the architects. And of course, the mechanical work as well, but. But he was, he, he's the one that just put it together, don't thank me. Yeah.
So, and again, we don't know, like Barabbas, we don't know the rest of the story. We don't know if the centurion then accepted Christ as Savior and changed his life. Stop being what he was doing then, stop killing people and change his life. Pray that he did, cause he recognized Jesus, did he accept him? I don't, and the people like that too, that ways we share, uh, do they recognize and then also accept?
Right.
And it's, that's part of discipleship too, is not just saying, I'm gonna introduce you. And just having them say the, the, the prayer of, you know, oh, Lord forgive me, you know, you know, just saying that. We gotta live it, we, and we gotta help them live it, to truly disciple somebody who's helping them live that life, so.
It's acknowledgement, it's affirmation, so.
And it's, it's disciple, helping them through that process of what it means.
Afterwards, yeah.
I think, John, you would know, well, the rest of everybody. Ann Beal was one of those people. Boy, I don't think there was a evil bone in her body.
No, not at all.
Know it from first time I talked to her.
And always concerned about everyone. And I mean, her hands got all swelled up and her joints. And she still wrote letters and it really hurt her when she couldn't write letters. And getting a letter from Ann Beal, a card from Ann Beal was just one of those great things. I have some still that she wrote to me and.
Oh, I was at that service, my goodness, all these grandchildren getting up and giving testemunies. Oh, wow.
Alright, let's look at the last life application questions. We've talked about, read this, the four gospels and the crucifixion of Jesus. And if people respond to the cross, how we responded to the cross.
Okay.
So seventy-two. What did the disciples do at the cross?
What was the question?
What did the disciples do at the cross?
John kinda mumbled when Christ said, this is your mother.
Oh, yeah.
Other than that, we don't know that any of them were there.
Yeah, but they walked away.
But somebody gave him a tomb, gave him a tomb.
Yeah, it wasn't, but one of the disciples was, somebody else, yeah.
It was probably someone who was a member of the Sanhedrin.
Yeah, you never know. Of the group. When they come to recognize Jesus.
What did Peter do during the cross time?
As far as we know, hid.
What did he do?
Or right before, yeah.
Oh, well, I, I'm sure he was, had a lot of, a lot of remorse.
MIA.
Denying Jesus three times, yeah. How about the women at the cross?
Wept, cried, prayed.
They were there at least.
Present.
Then they tended to him afterwards at the tomb. And then they were there.
First to see the resurrected Christ.
And the first to go and tell the good news about the resurrected Christ.
Now, that is a good one, I'm having this conversation with a couple people.
Here we go.
I'll remember.
They, they were, they went, you know, Jesus said, go and tell my disciples, and they did, they were obedient.
First to share the gospel, but.
And you know what, they had to go see for themselves, they did not believe a woman.
Yeah, yeah. What did pilot do at the cross? Some of these we've already said before too.
He was probably just glad it was over, he gave him a, a tag to put above.
It was his hand, so yeah.
It's done.
Walk away.
Well, pilot, let them have the body.
Yeah.
Now, I wanna ask, they was, did he die early? Because pilot was surprised that he had died, cause you know, asking for the body.
Also one of the, usually on the, again, as I understood, in the crucifixion, they have to still kill them. Otherwise, they're gonna be there for a long time and because the Sabbath was coming, they would go ahead and just take, finish taking their.
Oh, okay.
But yeah, Jesus died early, not what, not what it had been unusual, because you're dying from your body.
Yes.
Compressing.
Closing on your lungs.
Yeah, asphyxiation, you asphyxiate. And so that's why they nail the feet, so that you can raise yourself up and you can breathe again. And that's part of the torture, because it makes you linger and last. So you raise yourself up and you get a few breaths and then you slump back down. Cause you can't support the weight like that.
Yeah.
On those nails in your hands. And so, you know, people would normally, it lasts a day or two or sometimes lasts two days. And so, when they talk about going to the first rebel and breaking his bones. What they were doing was allowing him to, the weight to go down onto his arms, compress his lungs. So he would as- asphyxiate, so he would die quicker. And uh, one of the uh, things about Jesus, the prophecies about the Messiah. Was that no bone would be broken, so when they got to Jesus, he was already dead and they didn't have to break his bones.
Okay.
But they'd take an iron rod and break their shin bones.
Uh huh, they didn't even do that, did they?
No, they didn't, but that's what they would do on crucifixion, so the people would die.
Yeah, another fulfillment of a prophecy too, so that.
Well, I got things to do, yeah. It's inconvenient, I don't wanna stay out here all night and wait for him to die, no.
I heard a message one time from a perspective of a medical examiner. Uh, related to this time on the cross, it's really fascinating. But don't you think he died quickly because of the weight of the sins of the world?
Yeah, it would be. A spiritual perspective.
And I, I think the work was done, as he said. And so I think. He fulfilled his task and I think God recognized that and. Yeah, there, there's, I don't remember who it was, a documentary on. That you could find on TV at one time at the University of Washington. Where they strap people up and under, with medical, continuous medical care. And I mean, in twenty minutes or so, people could die if the weight was on their lungs. And they, cause you can't, if you're hanging on your arms, you can't raise yourself up and fill your lungs. So that's why, if, if you can, that's why sometimes they'd have a little step on the cross. So you could raise yourself or in Jesus' case, nail through. So you'd have to put all that pressure on those wounds.
So, any other, how he responded to the cross?
Sometimes better, sometimes worse or.
And going to the next question, what did Jesus sacrifice on the cross accomplish for us?
Repeat that.
So number two, what did Jesus sacrifice on the cross accomplish for us?
Our way of salvation. That's one of the things that's kind of interesting to me. The consequences of that of this story is not emphasized so much right here. If we don't accept an empty cross, what happens?
So do you mean we don't accept that the, that Jesus died on the cross for us?
Well, no, the, all, all the people that are watching.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and what they did, those who crucified Jesus aren't aware of the consequences of their actions at this point. Seems like it's not in the story.
Paul took a long time trying to explain it.
Yeah.
Paul?
Paul.
Took a lot of letters.
Well, he wasn't even there.
No, but I'm saying, people did not understand spiritually, the atonement, what was happening.
And I think all eleven disciples did too. You know, the rest of them, I think, should, you know, were passionate to share. We don't have a recording of that because they didn't all write something that, you know, understanding that they all would have accepted him because they got to see him later on, as we know. And I think they all continue to share too, so. I don't know if they went back to the specific people. So it might be hard to go back to them, right? Nobody has any of that experience. You try to go back to somebody that's mistreated you. So our salvation, our cleanse, our wholeness, all those things is what the cross.
Reconciliation, which is part of wholeness.
Alright, number three, what does it mean for you to follow Jesus in the way of the cross? So can breathe hard enough? That's specific. That, what are we gonna do? What does it mean? Because scripture says obedience, yeah.
Willing regardless of the co- of the cost.
My main thing is believing he is the son of God.
Yeah.
Well, and it's gotta be more the expanded belief, word belief, not just the simple, like the uh, demons believe that Jesus was the son of God, but it's more than just that simple belief.
I think each individual has to.
Yeah, that's the first step.
Yeah.
Not the only step though, but yeah, so it's absolutely necessary.
Sometimes I feel like Gideon, you have to put out a police if he responds.
Yeah.
Well, what I read was Matthew, Mark and Luke. And they all said the same thing. Deny, take up, follow. That's a three point sermon. But that what does it mean? Deny yourself, take up the cross, follow him. All three of them, boy, that was kind of, not much to have to explain there. They were consistent.
Take up his cross.
Right, you have to take up your cross.
Yeah.
Not Jesus' cross?
Cross, no.
You gotta deny yourself, so you take
Deny yourself.
Up his cross. Anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, not your cross.
Well, not his Jesus cross, your cross.
Jesus cross.
No.
No, if, any man will come after me, take up his cross. So he's talking about the man will have to take up his cross or the person. Yeah.
Everyone has.
You gotta deny yourself, you're gonna take up Jesus.
Jesus' cross is gone, it's rotting. It's in little pieces, it's in churches all over the world. That cross is gone.
A relic.
But we must take up our own cross. Mine's different from yours. Yours might be heavier than mine.
Your cross is the will of God for your life and you have to take up that will of God in your life and follow that. That's your cross to bear. Or you're denying God's will for your life.
And daily is the key too, not just Sunday or sometime.
Thought it was an hour Sunday and then you were good. You didn't have to do anything for the other seven hundred and forty-three hours.
I thought it was Christmas and Easter.
There you go.
You gotta get up and go on Christmas and Easter.
There you go, two hours a year.
You know, we have
Facetious.
This good Catholic in Florida, he never darkens the Catholic Church, so not even on the holiday, did he?
He's a good man. Pete, if you're listening, I love you. He was a, what did they call him? Non-
It's, or Christmas.
Non-practicing Catholic.
Non-practicing.
But he has gotten back a few times, you know. Well, he's, we're getting older.
With, with COVID, you know, and that we can Zoom and show worship on live stream. And I am so glad that some people who absolutely cannot get out can watch worship on live stream. But it also had meant that some people choose, I'll just stay home in my pajamas.
Yeah, yes.
And watch worship, and uh, watch worship. So, you know, I don't think that's exactly what we're supposed to.
Well, and the other issue with that is that when you're at home and you're watching, there are lots of other things to be distracted with.
Yeah.
And so you think, well, I'll just run over and do this because I don't really like this part of the service anyway. And before you know it, you're watching less and less of the service and more and more of other things are creeping in. And there are people that that wouldn't happen to, but that would happen to me. That would happen to me, you know, you, it that opportunity to sit and worship, if you can do it and to stand and worship and sing praise.
It can be done. Because we've got, we've got a lady if it weren't home.
Right, there, there's no doubt it is possible.
Oh, yeah, and I've visited several shut-ins
Right.
that they really are worshiping with us, you know, whether it's live or later on, they really are connected, so I greatly appreciate that, so. But making sure we do all the steps, uh, as it says in Luke nine, you know, denying ourselves, taking up our cross daily and following Jesus, so um, working on that. Uh, so it's not a one-time thing. You know, and praise the Lord, we're forgiven when we don't do what we're supposed to and we're given another opportunity. Uh, and I'll preach on this Sunday too, it's, you're never too old to be following Jesus. There's still things we're supposed to do. If we're breathing, we're supposed to be doing things for the Lord, so. And seeing that amazing people around here too.
I'm doing this study, we're learning new things too. Different things are drawn out in this.
That's a good point.
Especially you have to do four different books, Matthew, Mark, Luke and John.
Yeah.
How they get marketing reading.
So number four, how is Jesus suffering identification with humiliation and weakness? Change your perspective about life and suffering.
Not gonna be able to avoid it. Jesus warned his disciples, he said, if they'll do this to me, you think it won't happen to you?
But what he went through, nothing compared to what I've been through.
Good point, yeah.
Now, he had to be very obedient. I could see why he'd be praying. Do I have to go through this and be able to do that and stick to it? Because he knew what the end result would be.
I got, I got kind of ouchy about this point. I mean, excellent book, I think Reverend Titus had a bad day. How did he change your perspective? I I can't say my perspective has been changed.
Did you grow up in the church?
No, by reading this, it was the Bible study.
I see.
You know.
He could have said, how was your perspective?
It's kind of like, how dare you assume that my perspective needed to be changed? I gotta really.
The opportunity to grow to more understand.
A little arrogant.
Hopefully we can grow, continue to grow, to truly understand the suffering of what's going on um, and what we might suffer, you know, as we are faithful to what God's calling us to do. So hopefully we can continue to grow in the understanding um, again, his suffering, what it did for us and the suffering that we might do to actually be faithful. Again, I think our church was faithful, you know, to um, follow God's word, going with global Methodist. And how much did it cost?
Lots of money.
Ninety-eight thousand dollars.
That might have changed some people's minds. They had to pay out all that money.
But that's why I think when I, you know, I've talked to folks too, following Jesus costs, it doesn't always cost money. It may cost other people not liking you, other people being critical, other people, you know, saying you're selling.
It may, it certainly does. A lot of grief.
Yeah, so, you know, being faithful, obedient is gonna cost us something. But we also can know with that, just like Jesus did, even though you've suffered through some things, the blessing of being obedient, that the positive things that happened, Jesus saved all our lives, you know, and anybody that wants to accept it. We, if we're faithful, can also know many miracles and blessings and see people come to Christ because we're truly reaching out with God's word, with God's truth, doing what's right. So um, that, there are steps. So I hope we can all grow in that understanding, even though we've known it and, you know, like for us to continue to grow in what suffering means, those different perspectives.
Well, I wrote down on this in the question before, why not tell? And what I was talking about is why not tell people about Jesus? Cause you're supposed to be taking up your cross and you know that when you take up your cross, you're gonna suffer. So why not live into our faith? Why not tell people about Jesus? Because we're gonna suffer one way or the other. But if we're following God's will, yes, we may suffer as we follow God's will, but we'll also find the blessing that is in there, it has Pastor Genie saying, in the, in the obedience. So why not tell? Why keep our mouths shut?
Do it while you can.
Yeah.
There might be a time where we'll be criticized or punished.
I mean, Linda, earlier in their study today, told us the gospel in twelve words.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, so you can't say you don't have a story to tell. We all have that story. We all know, we all know enough to tell people. And when necessary, use words.
And I like Jesus' idea. He said some words and then he shut up.
They weren't gonna change his mind.
Time to be quiet, yeah, knowing that. Alright, seventy-four. How is God turning suffering into victory with the cross of Jesus? How has he done that in your life? I'm gonna bet life instead of his past, in your life.
What number was that?
Number five.
Number five.
Nobody suffered anything?
I, I wouldn't call stuff magnificent so much, but my life wasn't going the way it could. You know, yeah, until uh, I yielded my will to his. And uh, I mean, from the suffering standpoint, yeah. I wasn't getting good grades. That was probably the main thing. And uh, that prevented me from fulfilling my own personal dream, but things changed. And uh, I'm thinking.
Praise the Lord.
My example would be my brother when he died, because I went to Fort Wayne after he had passed into the hospital and his wife was there and I was driving home and I was thinking, you know, two years ago in Trinity, he accept, he accepted Christ. And so the comfort that was there for me coming home, because I could know where he was. And so, that was suffering that was removed for me by what Christ had already done and my brother accepting that sacrifice.
And I was real glad to talk to Liza Mintz about her son Joshua, that he had, as an adult, gotten baptized and accepted Christ. So even though he's a young adult, he's with the Lord now in his death. And so that was so good to hear. Again, it's still very difficult. I am sure I've not done that, but talking with people that have lost a child, but she knows he's in heaven, so that is the victory, that the cross had given.
Death, oh death, where is your sting? I've got one.
And the last question again is a, a personal one too. What are you facing now that you would like to give over to God so you can turn your tragedy into triumph? And if you've not had tragedy, there's other people around us in our, in our church and in our community.